Okay, I'm going to call this meeting the school committee to order. I'll remind everybody that the mission of Los Angeles Public Schools is for all students to be successful and engaged lifelong learners. And I ask you all to join me in the same. My allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic of the rich and sans, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, communications, if there's anybody here who would like to address the school committee on any subject not on the agenda, this is the right community. Senior, we move on to recognitions. Does anyone, it's been quite a couple of weeks here. Any recognitions? Okay, well then we're just moving on to the student advisory council.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Delaney Benchoff. For those of you who do not know me, I am here representing the student council executive board. Some of the others couldn't make it tonight unfortunately due to some sports events and college interviews. Basically, just talking about a lot of what we've done the past week. We had a really successful National Honor Society and Student Council cleanup day last Tuesday after school at the half day. We had the entire student council and NHS day after for about an hour and a half, two hours cleaning up outside of the circle, outside of the atrium in front of Foster High School and planting mums. And if you go outside, there's a bunch of flowers out there now. We also recently had our homecoming game last Friday where we crowned our homecoming king and queen, Harley Goulart and Colby Terramina. For those of you who couldn't attend, and we also won against Sogas 61 to 15 of my reserves. We are 6-0 for the football team, and I also believe that the field hockey team is still undefeated.
Any other questions? Don, thank you very much. Feel free to move on to whatever's next.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Have a good night.
Thanks you too.
Okay, the consent agenda, are there any items that any member would like to remove from the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda. Second?
All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, unanimous. And then we'll move right on to our October 1 enrollment reports. This is our annual.
And I have most of this in your packet. It's a breakdown by school and by grade. I also have a comparison with the 2017-2018 year. Starting with totals, we are at 2,890 as of October 1st. Last year, we had 15 more students at this time, 2,905. If we go across the bottom rows, we can see at the high school, it's up around 12. At O'Malley, a very large class moved into the high school, and so there's a dip of around minus 29. But the middle school has fluctuated between 640 and 670, at least over the last several years. So I don't necessarily see that as significant. The other changes, at Beaman is at 333 this year. They were six more at 339. East Gloucester, 209 this year, 215 last year. And Plunkville, as you can see, there's a difference of a differential of four. 212 last year, 217 this year. A difference at West Parish around 10 students. And our preschool continues to skyrocket. And last year, we were 107. They finished the year last year in the 130s. At this point, we're at 125, and don't really know what's going to be happening. But we are making plans for that other classroom which we have spoken about, both the subcommittee meeting and here at the school committee level as well. Any questions on that?
Was I correct in my analysis, which I might not have been because I was reading it off my phone, which was small, does classes seem like they're getting a little bit bigger as we come forward?
The size of the classes?
Yeah, something like the elementary.
Yes. You know, saying you increase the size of your classes?
I mean, it just looked like going into O'Malley would be a little bit higher than what we've had if all the kids go to O'Malley. And I could have been reading it wrong.
Grade level?
The grade level classes, yeah. I just wanted to know if that was. How does that?
Very much.
224 fifth grades.
Which is more. I mean, there seems to be this notion out there that class sizes are getting smaller. However, when I looked at this, it just seemed like they were either staying steady or getting a little bit bigger.
More or less, it's been a steady statement.
Yeah.
It is getting fueled by increase in the preschool as well, which has helped to offset some numbers. If we turn to school choice. That's a little bigger. Not much fluctuation in the numbers, either in the students coming in or the students who are choicing out. In 2017-18, we had a total of 30 students who chose in, and this year we have 39. So it's a little bit more than, but it's fluctuated those numbers over the past few years. And we can see there's, that four more students have choiced out compared to last year. Tell us more or less about this.
Do those choice numbers reflect the test? I should know the answer.
Do they reflect?
We fight no shirt. Yes, every year I think we have to do.
The answer's no, because that's technically part of the foster district, if not the foster schools. We can take a look at some of the school choice students. These are some of the students that are coming in and where they're coming in from. You can see the Rockport, we have 22 students. Manchester Essex Regional at 7, Salem, PBD, Lynn, Ipswich, Beverly, Reading, all have one or two students who are coming here. The next chart sort of shows which grades and the like, but I don't know if you want to see where they're coming in from. Most of the students, it appears, maybe that grade 12 has received eight students at Foster High School. Otherwise, it's a trickle.
We didn't get some of that supplemental?
No, we didn't.
In our packet, could you send it up to all of us?
Yes. I will see today myself, so. And choice out by district, we can see that there are 500 Beverly, Rockport as always is largest with 231. We had that choice up over 300 in the past, as high as close to 310. So the 276, the lowest I recall in recent history, and I can look it up, was around 287. So this, the numbers are pretty reasonable relative to the fact that we're losing students at all. And then Manchester Essex has 34. We're still waiting to hear from Hamilton, why don't they, they haven't responded to us as of today, but it's not been more than one student, I think, if at all. So that's the 276. The students choicing out from fifth grade to sixth grade. So with the sixth grade, I presume those would have been sixth graders, about 17.
Just consistent with fifth grade?
Yeah.
See, they have to crack open their sixth grade, yeah. They do.
Yes. But those numbers don't reflect movement this year, it just reflects the number that exists. So it doesn't mean that 17 kids were in the fifth grade last year and went to another school. They could have started in kindergarten.
That is correct. Yes. The 276 is stupid, too.
And the senior class looks like it's the largest, so the school choice, if it holds the trend, that will drop this year.
So I think that's all the charts. I have an alignment for you, you could copy these as soon as I can.
Any questions on enrollment? Then we'll move on to the welcome all principals, and we'll move on to the MCAS report.
Generally speaking, the 2017 MCAS results are generally good with one or two surprises, which we'll talk about. So we're looking at a new system, and we're looking at a new account of, whoops, I'm in the wrong place. It disappeared on me, give me just a second. I'm going to use this as an illustration to discuss the, is that big enough? Can you see that? It's more for a giant.
No.
I see colors.
How's that? Over here.
I'm just going to listen.
Okay. It's a new accountability system, which means that there are new things that are included in the accountability system. What is traditional is the achievement in English, math, and science. Growth, the student growth percentile, we have spoken of in years past, for English language arts and math. And then there's the issue of high school completion and the four-year cohort, starting four years prior to graduation rate, influx in, students moving out, and there's certain percentage rates that go into that. The extended engagement rate is a pleasant euphemism for students who took more than four years in order to graduate and how we did with that. And then the annual dropout rate is included as well, and all of these are weighted in. The reason you can see in this area that there are numbers here is because this is all high school information. Before I get further on that, there is also a measurement on progress toward English language proficiency, not necessarily by the MCAS, but by the test that's used to determine English language proficiency called the ACCESS. And then there's some additional indicators, such as chronic absenteeism, any student who's absent in 10 or more absences in the school year is considered chronically absent. And also advanced coursework, honest classes, AP classes, that's also calibrated as well. Each of them are weighted, there are a certain number of points that can be accumulated. And the number of points, for example, here, you know, achievement is, there are 12 total points that can be achieved. For the growth, there are eight. For the high school completion, it's over on this side, but there are 12. English language proficiency, there are total possible points, and additional indicators four as well. And they give you a weighted total of all of those points, which means that if you take 12 and multiply times point 6, and 8 times point 2, and 4 times point 1, and 4 times point 1, you add those totals up, and it comes out to 9.6. That's how a weighted total works. Okay, so they're, they're just taking a fraction of the 12, and a fraction of the 8, and so on down the line, and they're adding that up, and it comes out to 9.6. They then do the same with the performance. And in this particular instance, all students non-high school grades 3 through 8, our numbers are 4.9 out of 9.6. What's a very significant shift in this particular accountability system, here we have all students non-high school grades, and then equal, we have our lowest performing students, our lowest 20%, getting virtually equal weight when it comes to determining what the percentage of possible points are and where we stand with respect to our accountability. You have all students listed here. All students who are just the lowest performing students are listed here, and the 4.9 over the 9.6, that's 51%. The 3.6 divided by the 7.6 is 47%. You add those two up and take the average, and it's 49%. And quite frankly, when it looks, when we look at all the non-high school grades 3 through 8, the fact that our lowest performers came in at 47% of the total number of points compared to 51% for all students, that's really not bad that they're four points apart. Right, and the average, you take the two, the 51 and the 47, it's 49. They then do the same thing, your brow is a little, got that for us? Will this help?
I'm trying to see. Trying to see is the hard part.
Trying to see. Let me try again. Maximize this screen. Over here. Yeah, okay. Yes, no? Maybe? Okay, well, again, the calibration for the accountability system for all students grades 3 through 8 is here, and the low performing are here, and it's all mushed together by percentage. Plus, each of these areas has a weighted amount as well. Then they do the same thing for the high school. So that this section here, all students, is virtually the same as this section, and they also are measuring the lowest student performing, the lowest performing students as well. In this particular instance, these two numbers, the all students and the lowest performing students are added up, you get the average, and it's 17%.
And what percentage are they supposed to be at?
Well, if you're meeting all expectations, stay seated, it's 75%. So there are, there are some extenuating circumstances. One, the nature of the accountability system, trying to bang this home, the nature of the accountability system has much to do with the state wanting to see the lowest performing students rise up, which is a good thing. But it also adds a certain amount of weight in the overall accountability system based upon lowest performing students' performance, which is very difficult. And when 42% of your lowest performing students at the high school are English language learners, it pulls it down. And if those English language learners, and I don't mean to denigrate students in any way, but if I'm in a country that only had two years worth of Spanish, Italian, or whatever, I ain't going to do so much. And if those students are also economically disadvantaged, that's going to pull that score down as well. Not to suggest that we, you know, we do, as you'll see, that there are areas in that, particularly with our most challenged students, where we need to really examine and see what we need to do. The high school in particular has been steady petty for years, and all of a sudden, we saw a dip this year in the assessment. There are some numbers that are low, and there are some numbers that are impacted by the demographics, as I've just tried to describe. In identifying the overall accountability relative to the state, they've taken these two numbers, all students 3 through 8, lowest performing students 3 through 8, they took the averages, they got 49, and that's going to count for 70% of the overall score, presumption being that elementaries and middles are this much of the district, and the high schools are about that much of the district. They then take these two numbers and the average, and that 17 is going to be 30%. So it's the 49 times point 7 plus the 17 times point 3 divided by 100, and that comes out to 39%. So the district at large is at 39%.
Have you done any analysis to see, like, surrounding communities, like Beverly or Salem, to see if their numbers, because I'm sure students came into their district too around the same time we got students in the high school. Have you done any comparisons to those communities to see if we're in the same ballpark as them? Having the same issues?
The only thing I'm aware of, because I haven't had a chance, is that one of our very favorite communities, Route 127, I believe that the elementary schools' overall performance is lower than Foster's elementary schools. The elementary schools, you will see, have done reasonably quite well.
Salem had some similar situation to ours.
Because I know we did that influx last year and the year before with high school students, English language learners, and other communities did too. So I'm wondering if they're seeing the same type of results, or is this something that's...
It's complicated, as we'll see later, but Salem did have very similar results. They're starting in a different place in run with their ELLs as well. But as you'll see, some of the data, also what you're seeing here largely is a 2017-2018 comparison. We had a jump, as you'll see later, from four ELL students taking the MCAS to 20.
Wow.
Which represents a significant portion.
25.
Well, 20 English language learners with five former English language learners, so 25 total.
So new accountability system, dividing grades 3 through 8 on one side, the high school on the other side. And on both sides, American and nationally, it's the all students and it's the lowest performing students, in order to divvy up all these things. These are the new categories. There are weighted points that are associated with it. They then take averages and so on and so forth, and that's how they come up with the percentages. Yes. I don't know if I could uncomplicate it any more than that.
I may have heard. What determines most performing students?
It's the, it's the lowest 20%.
Lowest 20?
So at the high school, for example, we're familiar with the old scaled scores. And if you line them up and you sort it.
They're taking this side of the number.
Then they take the lowest 20%. In that case, it's around 42 students, approximately.
And the reference points for where they are would be a grade test, public 10th grade? I mean, the lowest performing students?
Are based upon their 2018 MCAS exam at the high school at San Jose.
Only the student growth percentile is based on comparing them from eighth grade to 10th grade at the high school level.
How do I skate that?
So whatever what you're saying is correct, is that they're expecting young people who have entered into this country that don't speak the language to within two years to be able to perform as if they've been in our system since getting a crime?
Yes.
This brings us to safety.
One year with that.
One year with that. Well, yeah, because it's down there emphasis on the word problems. I mean, if you can't define, this is insanity.
As you'll see, many of our students at the high school passed the test. They got needs improvement, but they passed the test, so they're on track to graduate after doing this. A lot of kids did it. It's just that, you know, had they been here the whole time, they probably would have been proficient, right? So for us, you know, in one hand, it's a success. We have, you know, this increase in English language learners, and the vast majority of them, God needs improvement, and a couple of them not proficient. So that's, you know, in terms of instruction, kind of where they were when they came into where they were, you know, when they took the MCAS, where they are now, it's a great success. So, and you know, one of the things we've talked about this, the data can teach us, it could teach us something, but having professionals really dig into it to look at individual students and how they're doing and do item analysis and all that, that's like where a lot of insight and hate work is.
And when they're doing statewide comparisons, district by district, are they taking into consideration working cities compared to suburban cities?
No.
I'll get that following.
Melissa has a question.
So in addition to everything we've discussed, using the computer is also new to them, right? Am I correct in saying that in common?
It wasn't new to the, to the elementaries and the middle school. They've been getting introduced. We've tried to stay on the cusp of that, and next year, the high school will be doing it.
Well, that's the last one.
So the high school has not, did paper this year? With the, okay.
And what percentage of the test had next generation type questions versus what traditional school?
Apparently, at this point, it's the new standard. It's just not in the new form.
So that would be a mitigating factor that we have to adjust to as well. Constructional strategies and how these things have been assessed, we need to make sure that those are really lockstep. So there's going to be a series, only about 80 of these, but the thing to look at is to just have this wash over, and using the different groups. Everything else in the middle is detailed stuff which we may or may not point out, but here we're looking at this.
Can I just ask you a question before you start this conversation, just so I understand the last column, target?
Yes.
How is the target determined? And is it determined differently each year? In other words, I'm seeing that target didn't be target target. So before we get into talking about it, can you just tell me what target is?
Traditionally, and maybe it's changed, but traditionally, at the starting point, a school was at a certain achievement level. Let's call it 75. And where the department of ed wants them to get to is at 100 in five, in six years. So the differential between 75 and 100 is 25, and you divide the 25 by 6 and come up with 4 point whatever it is. And so each year, they should be going up 4 point whatever that is. That's how the target is established.
So every community has that same target? So this isn't a target that we control, this is a target that's controlled by the state?
Well, it's relative to the baseline that was first established when they created it. So one school could be at 75, another school could be at 62, another school could be at 91. And 91 is from 100 is nine over six years, so they have less amount because there's less space between where they are.
And can you tell me what declined means?
Decline means that, is there a decline here? You'll see some of that, but if, if they had a 477 and this went down to 476 the next year, that would be a decline.
Oh, that's, okay, it's a decline. I thought we were decline, not, not giving a reason.
No, decline as a team.
Sorry.
And there are zero points for that. If you've exceeded the target, it's four points. If you've met the target, it's three. If you improve below the target, it's two. If there's no change, I think there's one. And if there's, if there's a decline, it's zero.
You're saying 100. Can, is there a score above 100?
It's, no, it's a composite performance index, which we've talked about since.
So you go from 75% to perfection?
Well, your, your target, the progression of how you should be moving is technically toward 100.
And 100 is perfection?
It's everything's.
Is that district 100?
No. You could be in a situation where you're at the 98 percentile because.
You'd decline.
You would decline. That's right. Not our problem right now.
I understand, it just, it comes to who's sitting in these cubicles coming up with these.
I'll mention the superintendent's report, the Board of Education is meeting on October the 11th to discuss this accountability system. And James has mentioned to me and shown me how the new commissioner, Riley, has said we need to take a very close look at this untested accountability system. So he's sending out a vibe that he's not sure that this is the way we should be going, and the Board of Education will begin to take that up on October 11th.
Are they looking for public comment?
I believe they are at some point. Yes, I will keep informed on that. Okay, targets.
Thank you.
Improvement comparison with 2017, even though the test is different. But if you look at all students, this is grades 3 through 8. So the three places to look, these are the various subgroups. These are whether they met the target or not, and we'll be switching between non-high school and high school. So this is the non-high school, and relatively speaking, we either, our groups either met target or improved below target. That's what you see in front of you. And when we flush that out at the elementaries again, who knows? You'll see that they're relatively quite strong scores. Look at the math, and we can see that there is a, this is the high school at ELA, we do see a decline. And just to illustrate, the 96.9 in 2017 was at 90.2. So there is a change of 6.7. Some of these numbers are daunting, 17 in the lowest performing group, but we also spoke about the composition of the lowest performing group as well, and that is a big issue. The high needs at the high school is 62%, and there was a change of minus 9.2 as well. So this is a school that has consistently maintained, and we're seeing some low numbers, but we also have some demographic considerations to take into account as well. Back to the non-high school, and we're looking at math, and you can see that in Back to the non-high school, and we're looking at math, and you can see that in most areas, as a district, we improve but below target. Some of the changes are relatively static. I mean, these are not sizable increases, but we also didn't decline. If we look at the high school and the math achievement, we can see that there are declines across the board. Again, our lowest performing group is at minus 20. So, you're going to see this drag on all students because of a particular subgroup. There's 45 ELLs, sorry, 45 lowest performing, 18 of them, 40% are ELLs. It's going to drag things down. Our students with disabilities, there's some work that clearly needs to be done there as well. Back to the non-high school, the science achievement, and it's static or it's improved below target. We have a science program which is in its second year. It's undergoing close examination. You had a meeting with them yesterday afternoon, if I'm not mistaken.
Today?
Today. And there is still plenty of work to be done. Back to the high school, science, we have some declines, on average of around eight points or so across the board. All I can do is report it. This is the student growth percentile, and I hate to complain, but you've heard over the last three years that normal distribution is between 40 and 60 for the mean student growth percentile. Between 40 and 60 is what the Department of Ed has registered as the normal distribution. They, in their wisdom, have created a, they've split the difference, and the target is 50. So, you won't see, you'll see some, but you won't see a lot of student growth percentile that has met or exceeded the 50. But here, as a district, grades three through eight, every one of them is in that normal distribution range. This one's closing in for all students. It's closing in on the 50, and some of the subgroups perhaps have put a little bit of a pull in the negative direction, but the all students is quite close to that target 50. Back to the high school, again, we can see that everything is below target, but that arbitrary 50 is something about it that bothers me after they had publicized the whole notion of the 40 to 60 normal distribution. There's some areas here that we do need to take a look at. Our students with disabilities, our lowest performing, those numbers are low. And so, the picture begins to emerge that the underbelly in our performance rests in the, with our lowest performing students. This is where we need to really take a look at our work. In mathematics, non-high school, everybody has, again, we've got some that have met the target. All students met the target, but some of our subgroups still are firmly in the normal distribution. And we'll be striving to get that 50, but it's going to be tough to reach. In mathematics at the high school, again, they're below target. Some of them are below the normal distribution, and that's an area that we need to take a very close look at. Turning to the four-year cohort graduation rate, when I showed you that one with all the colors, that was one of the factors that go into the overall accountability system. And they're basing this on 2016 and 2017 graduation rates. All students have met the target, high needs, and then not be disadvantaged students with disabilities and have all improved below target, and the white population has met the target.
I just want to add, this is the number that we had such difficulty with a couple of years ago, you remember? So, this is an area we had targeted for improvement, and we were able to meet the target here.
We created two positions, if you recall, one academic, one counseling, and a bunch of cuts, we eliminated one of those positions for this year. The extended engagement, there are some, these are the students who has taken more than four years for graduation, and there is a bit of decline, which means less percentage of students in 2015 and 16 graduation periods of time, less of them have gone on through their extended engagement and graduation.
And this is that cohort. So, if you remember that cohort, when they were the four-year graduation rate, this is that cohort still showing up in the extended engagement rate. So, if you remember from last year when we looked at the five years, so we were generally on an improvement, and had this 2016 cohort was the blip of a dip, but otherwise.
The annual dropout rate, here you can see the work that has put in has paid off, and in most instances, we've exceeded the work, met the target for economically disadvantaged. There was no change, but the other one, two, three, four categories have exceeded their Progress towards attaining English language proficiency, this is grades three through eight, there were 91 students. This is based upon the access test, which determines the level of proficiency that our students have. And as you'll see here in the high school, they all have met their target. So, the ELL programs are working. When we look at the high school, there were 35 students, and they improved, but it is below the target that was set by the Department of Ed. Chronic absenteeism, here a decline means a greater absentee rate, and I think you'll probably hear a couple of schools concerned about absenteeism to repeat, but chronic absenteeism means a child is absent 10 or more times in the school year. This is for non-high school, and we can see that there is a decline, which means that more students were chronically absent as defined by the Department of Ed than were in 2017. So, I'm sure the principals will talk a little bit about that and our need for community outreach and our antagonism toward vacations to Disney outside of our school vacation Chronic absenteeism at the high school, our lowest performing exceeded, our economically disadvantaged improved below target. This is based on, you know, all students. Some decline with students and disabilities, so it's a bit of a mixed bag with respect to the various subgroups at the high school with chronic absenteeism. Advanced coursework, they add up all the numbers of high-level courses, some of them are honors, some of them advanced placement, and they come up with a figure based upon the number of students and so on and so forth. But you can see here that in all but one instance, they have either exceeded the target or improved below target. This says to me that, you know, our higher academic achievers are performing well, reasonably well, possibly not up to the goals that are set by the Department of Ed, but there is improvement almost all across the board here with the exception of students with disabilities. And then assessment participation across the district, we all met our participation rates with the respect to the numbers of students who actually did the exams, so I won't bother reporting on that. The same is true for science. So, that's the district, and hopefully we'll next go through each of the schools. There are less slides for each of the schools because they don't have graduation cohorts and so-called advanced coursework and all the rest. But is any questions about the district perspective?
I have a question. The slide on the five-year cohort, did the column say there was 240 in that cohort?
We have an overall number of 215.
That's white.
It's 240.
So, over a fourth of the school population is an extended cohort right now?
No, that is the student who graduated 2016 we're talking about. That cohort was, when they came in as ninth-grade students, we had 240 students in the class of 2016 when they entered the.
Thank you. I was kind of blown away.
It was 240. So, moving to Beeman. Beeman, by the way, around three years ago was in the ninth percentile. It's now in the 39th percentile. And these are the composite scores for ELA achievement, and in all but one, they either met the target or improved below the target, or, and in two cases, they exceeded the target. So, we're looking at some pretty good scores. Students with disabilities, tough children to learn, and we're working with them. Looking at the math, they either, all students improved below target. We can see that a number of groups, our high needs, economically disadvantaged, and even our English language learners have exceeded the target, as well as, well, the 26 Hispanic Latino subgroup also exceeded the target. The white population improved below target in math, reasonable performance. In science, decline or no change. So, again, this is an area, right over here, you can see that there's a sort of dip of around 5.2 points, so that's an area that we need to take a look at. The growth, everything's below target, but out of the four, six, one, two, three, four of them are in the normal distribution. Our lowest performing is at 39, which is on the cusp, but we'll call that low. Our students with disabilities at 31.7, so that is an area of concern as well. Overall, our students are 47.6, well within striking range of the target of 50 for student growth percentile. In math, we see some very nice normal distribution numbers, 55.7, which has, why they only state that have met the target and didn't exceed the target is a little beyond me. I'm checking on that. The lowest performing at 40.9. So, there are some robust SGP numbers here in math at Beeman. Progress towards attaining English language proficiency, we saw before that students have met the target, and if I go too fast or too slow, please let me know. Chronic absenteeism, exceeded the target's a good thing. That means that they lowered the amount of chronic absenteeism by a significant percentage of points. The change is only 2.1, but they're referring to that as exceeding the target. And the others have improved below target, so the absentee question at Beeman's in relatively location.
Yes.
That's good. Okay. Can we just hear the next question?
Yeah, absolutely. So, just in terms of thinking about some ratios for the Beeman School, ELL students obviously are our shining star. You can see that they are exceeding in most of our content areas or at met target, which is, I really attribute to, we have two fabulous ELL teachers. We were able to take on a new one last year and add to the student-to-teacher ratio and help that out a bit, so they're doing quite nicely. Overall, our performance in math and ELA has improved in all of our grade levels in terms of student achievement. Math's sort of the greater shining star, and when you compare it to 2017 results, we've really seen a nice boost there, and I do attribute that to a lot of work that we put forth in drilling down and doing an analysis of what we had to work on last year. Geometry was a place where we really fell apart, and we put some ideas into place for teachers to incorporate that through different parts of the day and throughout the year to kind of boost those scores. And obviously, our chronic absenteeism rate, and I do attribute that to my whole teaching staff and myself, our close work with Christina Clowden, who's in charge of district attendance. She has been very supportive in helping us to meet with families and reach out to the community and find different types of incentives or resources or whatever it needs to be to get the kids there that need to be there. There's certainly opportunities for growth. Growth and achievement among special education students is a concern across the board in all of our content areas. We have made some significant changes to the special education department within Beeman. I've given some assignments out to the current teaching staff, and we've taken on a new member, actually a 15-year veteran from the Beverly Public Schools who's joined us this year on the team, and we will be working through that to find some areas to build our strength. Science achievement is also another concern for us. One of the next steps we've taken there is to assure that in our master schedule, that there are 90 minutes of science instruction happening at each grade level, and that there is a solid one-hour block for every grade level to get a real lab-like experience, some hands-on learning in science. Other next steps for us, we have developed an MCAS data dive team that's really going to start to pull apart and dig deeper into some of this and do some analysis to find patterns, and then give us some clues as to where we might want to make some instructional changes to meet some of the areas that we have concerns about.
Is there, we're still bringing in ELL students into Beeman?
The newcomers?
Yes. Change.
That's a change. Just briefly, the numbers, the anticipated numbers of newcomers around the district didn't turn out the way it had been expected. It ended up being predominantly veteran students. I think it was seven out of 10 or 11 were veterans. So, it made more sense for us to provide staffing at both veterans and Beeman, and those students have, that's state of veterans this year, to focus the school, so there will be a lack of a transition. Two weeks lost. I see we already exceeded a lot of places. This is ELA achievements, some very, very nice, strong numbers. Student with disabilities met the target as well, ELA. We turn to math, and we continue to see a number of exceeded target. Student with disabilities improved but below target, but still there is measurable improvement.
One point two off.
Excuse me?
Just one point two off.
Yes.
None of it count.
Very strong scores. This is science. All students exceeded the target, and the white subgroup met the target. We turn to growth. We can see that in all instances, the targets were met or exceeded. And in mathematics, either all met the target with the overall high needs, which is sort of a conglomeration of special education, English language learners, economically disadvantaged, whoever else, they were slightly below target, but.
Two tenths.
Two tenths. Thank you, yes. Shout out.
I will.
It's all pretty strong performance. No report of the incline due to low numbers. We turn to chronic absenteeism. We see some declines with the exception of students with disabilities, and the rest up here.
So, I'm very happy with the student growth overall. We will continue moving on like we are with the RTI, both ELA and math. We progress monitor students, so trying to see how predictable this is to the MCAS scores, that's why I'm there. The number I'm not happy with is the chronic absenteeism. I don't like applying anything, but one of the things I did too is I shared at the teacher night, all our wonderful exceeds and meets, and then showed the chronic absenteeism, and I made a plea to the parents that I can't fix this without their support, so I'm asking for them to partner with me and get the students to school. So, it's definitely going to be a school-wide focus this year. I have people in the building that pleaded their goal for the year to help improve this. The absentee rate was addressed at the teacher night, and we're going to continue to be working with families to help support them to get them to school because we need them there.
And your accountability percent, 71?
71.
71?
Yep.
You said 71, but I saw 71.
The preliminary was 71, and I think when actual came out, there's always a way to help that.
So, what is going on in your school? It's awesome. So, what kind of work do all of you do together to share best practices? Because I know we have the curriculum, what do they call it? Where's equal in all the schools? Curriculum mapping that we did years ago so that all have the same access. So, what kind of conversations are going on either at your leader meetings or things like that to take the best practices and put them into other schools? Because you all have great ideas, and I'm sure you all have strung. Because you all have great ideas, and I'm sure you all have strengths in your own area, but I'm just curious, before we go on to other schools, what, what happens?
The elementary schools work collaboratively together on a lot of things. Most things, actually. And we share ideas around data meetings and implementing interventions and best practices. The curriculum is mostly the same for across the world, district-wide.
Now, does your school have two ELL teachers like Beeman, or you have less students?
I have, she was a .5 ELL, she's probably up to about a .6 or .7. My ELL teacher splits between East Gloucester and West Parish. My population for ELL students is low.
Okay.
We have five new ones this year, and it's just coming back low.
Okay. Thank you.
In terms of actual presence in the district, there's much less footprint with basic readings too. But the fundamental basis, we heard about data, we heard about certain types of instruction, we didn't hear about, but the notion of principal leadership, and a host of five fundamental elements to the whole literacy program, to that's something which is unified throughout. The math and focus program, which now is fourth or fifth year, you know, if you have good soil, you get good plants, and we had, I think you hopefully remember, we had about 22 teachers on that particular committee, and from the get-go, the buy-in has been strong. And I think performance is in no small way a result of the unified effort across the different schools to make that particular program work.
And I think, and for all the elementaries, I can speak to the RTI support and the regularly progress monitoring is what helps us maintain that growth. Because we almost, my, my coach is pretty much can say, she's meeting goal, we need to do this, just walking, seeing kids down the hall, they know, they know our kids, we all do, so we, and we work together.
So if the kids here, they're going to measure two weeks later, four weeks later?
If they're in need, it would be two weeks, every two weeks. So if you think of the terms of green, yellow, and red, so the green kids, we, we progress monitor, we benchmark at the beginning, we kind of let the green kids, we don't progress monitor as much. If they're in yellow, we'll progress monitor once a month. If they're in red, we progress monitor every two weeks.
That's a lot.
It is, but it works.
Yeah, no, I know.
It's a very quick, like a demo progress monitoring is just within minutes.
It's within a minute, yeah. While we're asking general questions, we're not seeing, I know we used to see kind of advanced proficient these problematic scores. Are we, do you still see, no more?
No more.
That's why I'm using these, these lines.
They have meets targets and exceeds targets for the individual's score.
Partially meeting.
So, so when the parents get their record, their student might partially meet the target, and it's about 500 is meeting.
Yes.
So if you score above the 500, then you've met the target. Help me out, which is exceeds, like 540 or something like that?
Of course, because it's exceeded 500.
And then there's exceeds.
Okay, so I, I don't need an answer tonight or ever, but in turn, are you happy with the, with the distribution of those that are exceeding? Are our highest achievers, or are, are we pushing kids as much as we possibly can at the high, you know, we talk a lot about intervention. I'm always on, do we have enough rigor for...
So at each Gloucester, I can speak only for mine, I would say yes. That growth is measuring all levels, so even those high levels, but they're still expected to grow. So the high, exceeding of growth is speaking to them.
It's been my contention, and I don't know the extent to which it's been institutionalized, but with the standard-based report card for our highest academic achievers, how do they demonstrate that they are exemplary or what's the, what's proficient?
To get a four.
To get a four. And it's always been my argument that there needs to be an infusion of next grade level work that is reasonable enough and challenging enough in order to make a distinction between proficient versus exemplary. And to what extent our teachers are focusing on that or not, I don't really know, it's a conversation of the time. But that, I think, is the hook that will push kids, you know, in, towards that direction for always being challenged regardless of what level it is. We move on to Plum Cove from Lanesville, our representative from Lanesville. And we look at the ELA. We, we can see that all of our students category met the target, our lowest performing met the target, the combination of the high needs and our economically disadvantaged, those declined around three or four points respectively. And the population of, of white subgroup students did meet the target as well. In looking at the math scores, there, again, we see a similar pattern, where all students and lowest performing students met and exceeded the target. As in literacy, our high needs and economically disadvantaged, those declined, but we're talking of 1.4 points from 2017 performance, which is not catastrophic to say the least. And the white subgroup also hasn't met the target. Science, there is no change, and you can see that there's one point as a result with no change. In this particular instance, anywhere in the area of like 1.6 points between 2017 and 2018 constitutes a designation of no change. If we turn to growth, we see some 57.7, and a 53, and a 58.1. And our lowest performing students are also in that aforementioned 42.9 normal distribution from 40 to 60. In mathematics, the growth is very strong. Very good year in math, as we can see that they are above the 60, and therefore, as James had mentioned before, they get the designation of exceeded the target. No report out on the proficiency. And then there's the chronic absenteeism, and here we see a decline in the rating, which means that we're looking at an increase in the number of students who are chronically absent.
Do you see this as an issue with vacations, or do you see this with an issue as parents or kids just not coming to school?
From my school?
From your school, yeah.
It's vacation.
It's vacation.
This year already. We know students who are prone to strep throat.
Yep.
Hey, you know your child's going to get strep at least two or three times. You know they're going to be sick. And the chronic absenteeism is excused and unexcused absences. They're taking vacations during school time. Already, I've had probably four stu, four families, four families out on vacation during the month of September.
Cheap airfare.
Yeah, it's cheap airfare, but it's also affecting their child.
But that, so that's what you see?
Right.
At your school too, do you think vacations or is it tardiness?
Tardiness is also a challenge at East Gloucester. So between, but vacations is an issue too.
Would you say that's the prime issue, or is it more?
I would like to hear both.
No, I understand that, but I'm just trying to figure out what is the biggest...
So what they're measuring is the chronic, so it's not necessarily the percentage of students that are absent or tardiness.
Right, it's not the way.
It's any child that has 10 or more absences.
It's 10%.
Right.
Eight, 10%, so eight of 180 days.
That's right.
It's 18 days or more.
18, excuse me.
Where before last year, I tracked all my monthly absences, and I fell within the 96, 95. They used to give us credit, it was a freebie, the points they gave us for 95%. They're not doing that. They've taken the number of students that missed 10% of the school year, so 180 days, 10% of that is 18.
Okay.
They're marking those students as chronic absenteeism, whether it's documented as excused absences or not.
Right.
So, and we get no points.
And that week-long vacation is an automatic five if they eat it, yeah.
Or if they do two.
Yeah, sometimes in the fall and the spring, yeah.
Yeah.
And it is...
Can you, how many did you have again?
I had, when I looked with my minis, I had 16 from last year, four were kindergartners now, so that's why I wanted to check in, so say 12. And when I looked at those 12 students, they also fell within the high needs and the economic disadvantaged students that I'm now declining in. And then when I went deeper, they missed the 500 point, which would have been meeting, by less than five points, sum only by one. So it's, what I'm trying to tell with the chronic absenteeism is that, yes, we understand you want to take a family vacation, it's cheaper here, but this is why the school puts in vacation times. When you take your child out, your child may be very, have the ability to carry on and to catch up, you know, to, to be where they were, where they left off. But a lot of these kids are coming back. When you miss that direct instruction, you can't get that back. When you miss the practice during the day, you know, after that direct instruction, you can't get that back. Then the kids find out, okay, they get a little anxiety because they know they're behind. And then it, it just snowballs into more absenteeism when they do have a legitimate excuse of being sick.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Now, your accountability percentile was?
78.
78, which is the highest number for the district. And you've got a chronic absentee issue that you take, you take issue with, so do we. And I didn't point it out earlier, but the largest number of students from any elementary school of choice is from Plum Cove. Doesn't make too much sense to me. Okay, did you want to, did you say what you need to say?
I think I did, I, you know, I'm happy with our student growth, like I said, we, we drilled down with the MCAS. You know, our objectives are, like you said, what are the five schools doing? We're, you know, we're doing our ELA and math data meetings, we're doing our progress monitoring. And from those, you know, results, we look at, you know, interventions, appropriate interventions, we look at enhancing and, you know, pushing the kids that can go further to bring them up. And again, we're stuck every year with those form letters that go home, and poor Christina Clemm's trying to just, you know, divide herself between all of our schools to really get the point across about absenteeism.
Returning to veterans, ELA. Four, five out of six listings exceeded the target in literacy, ELA achievement at the Veterans Memorial Elementary School. In math, our lowest performing exceeded, and there was no change and some declines. The declines, if you take a look, are minus 1.6, minus 1.3, minus 1.3, not the direction we want to go in, but as, as said before, that's not catastrophic, it's just something that we need to work toward in order to flip it up so that it's plus 1.6 and plus 1.3 or better. Our white subgroup population improved but below target. No change or declines. Decline was 3.1 in the high needs population, so an area that, amongst the other challenges that veterans has, an area that we need to look at. English language arts growth. Here we see that they're, they range from 39.5 to 53.1. 39.5 is a half a point from the normal distribution. So there is growth that's taking place at veterans. It's not at the, necessarily, with the exception of two, they're not at that 50% target, but there is growth that is taking place in English language arts. In mathematics, all of these two growth percentiles are either in the mid to upper 40s, and for our lowest performing group, it's at 50.8. So working with the most challenging students and getting results. No progress on that. Chronic absenteeism, it doesn't seem to be the same issue as in some of the other schools. That is a testament to the work of administration and teachers, getting the kids at the school, all our veterans. We've got some met targets, some exceeded targets, and improved below target, and then one population was down by 1.5.
So just like Dr. Sapphire said, really excited about our ELA, exceeded five out of our six targets. And we were very happy with seeing the logistics areas of change in lowest performing and students with disabilities. So that shows that our full inclusion setting co-teaching model is working now in our sixth year, so it's really starting to become part of our, part of our culture. Mathematics, again, we didn't decline overall in achievement, but there's areas where we missed by a small margin, so we're going to be working to drill down and find out where there were declines in those areas. One of the things I'd just like to point out is that I had the third grade and the fifth grade cohorts who were very small groups of kids. 31, I think, in my third grade, and 24 kids took the test in grade five. So that can, you know, one kid does poorly, that's going to...
That's one, yeah.
Yeah. But really excited about our student growth percentages. We didn't get quite to 50, but if you can see in 2017, we were only 27 and 33, so we saw a nice bump in that. Chronic absenteeism, if that's, it's a different story than what my colleagues were talking about. A lot of that's around social emotional issues. So we do a lot, over the last several years, we've really seen our numbers go, I always get confused up or down, so it's...
It's improved better.
It gets better. It gets better. I got more kids at school, there you go.
Because your decline is actually an improvement, whereas your reported decline is a...
Right. So, so we do a lot of things. Iron kids, so when a kid who doesn't miss school, they get the iron award, there's a wall of fame, there's our safety and supportive school environment, we, you know, like I, we've talked before about the therapy animals, and we're really going to start working Wheezy, the dog, in especially to help us out with kids, Wheezy, kids that are, you know, anxious about coming to school and things like that. So we're, we were, we were happy with our performance so far. I think our third graders that are taking the test this year are someone that we're going to watch very closely, because traditionally, our kindergartners come in with really little to no skills. So over the last four years, we've put just about all our resources down into kindergarten with the goal to get them all to green before they leave, get them to grade level, before they leave kindergarten. So that push that we've had, that's going to show up with these third graders now. So really excited to see how they're going to do, and I hear from teachers and seeing the data that they're a good-looking group of kids.
Two questions. What percentage of your school is ELL?
It's, I know it's about over 40 children, so...
And do you see any issues with vacations in your school?
No. Like I said, it's, occasionally a kid will take a vacation, but for the most part, it's a social emotional, it's a social emotional issue.
Great job.
Thank you.
Okay. On to West Gloucester, the West Parish Elementary School. It looks like 100% exceeded their target, all groups in literacy. Go on after a second.
Drop.
And it looks as if they exceeded their targets in mathematics as well. And it looks as if they exceeded their targets in science achievement. Overall, you were the 74th percentile, Plum Cove the 78th, East Gloucester the 71st.
I don't expect that repeating, like it's really hard once you're at a certain point and you make so many growth, so much growth over time. You're not going to see exceeds every year, it's just not possible. It's why they had to change the model in the first place. We couldn't get to that 100 points of CPI. So, you know, it's, it's, it's something we're really celebrating, we're really happy about it. He's going to go to the next slide, and I'm going to tell you I'm not so happy about the next slide.
Yeah, yeah. I said in an afternoon meeting, I called all of the ELLC and political reasons, and there were three different groups, and it was not good. These people were working as hard as they could possibly work in identifying the math goals for the year, talking about some social emotional stuff. And the first...
Developing social questions, getting some science standards.
Right, unpacking the science standards to what is exactly that we want these students to be able to demonstrate and show they don't, and can do. And it was very impressive. In the growth, so here we have a school that's exceeded all their targets, but because In the growth, so here we have a school that's exceeded all their targets, but because their SGP's are between 45.8 and 53.2, they're either below target or met target. Steve Orman's line, excuse me. In mathematics, we can see that the all students and the lowest performing exceeded their targets, high needs and economically disadvantaged met their targets, and the white subgroup also exceeded their targets as well in terms of SGP.
The mathematics information is consistent across all the schools, everybody is doing that, which really is great feedback on the curriculum and the effort that's put in. I guess the math is really a weak point.
They're all striving.
Can I mention one thing right into this moment since you brought it up? I'm just looking at the state percentile rankings of the elementary schools, and I think it's worth pointing out that about five years ago or so is when the schools really started coming together. We added the coaches, we invested in BSRI, and so the committee is wondering if that was money well spent, and if the schools are wondering if it was time and an enormous amount of energy well spent. Over the last five years, we have four accountability data points. Last year we didn't have one, districts didn't have one. But in those four, I just, I think it's quick to remember that in 2014, even was at the ninth percentile in the state and has moved steadily like this up to the 39th. East Gloucester was the 56th percentile in the state and has moved steadily to the 70th percentile. Plum Cove, 67 to 78 over the time period. Veterans from 15 to 24, West Parish from 63 to 74. Every single one, all five elementary schools have moved substantially since, over the last five years, to the point where we have three, three of our elementary schools are in the 70th percentile in the state. And they, and all five are moving steadily higher and higher. That's incredibly good news. And it really coincides with a lot of coordinated district-wide efforts from the elementary schools. Not taking anything away from the middle and the high school, and they, we are in a new accountability system and that it's going to take a little, some adjustments. But the elementary schools really received a lot of focus and attention because of where they were. So this demonstrates a couple things, that in a very large scale, when we put our mind to it and focus, we can see really, you know, progressively improvements and sustained gains. It's a, it's a really good story.
Are all our elementary schools level two?
There's no one levels.
We, we don't have the levels they left off. The last time we had levels, they weren't.
They were?
Yes.
It's now either partially meeting targets, meeting targets, or exceeding targets. So what are we doing?
I've got my last slide, I've got those numbers.
Sorry. Dr. Jeff, can you go back to this slide just one second? So just to piggyback on what Greg's saying, if you look at the ELA growth at West Parish, last year, similar to what Matt said, last year we were not inside the 40 to 60 typical distribution in our fourth and fifth grade and then as a school. And this year we are well within that, but I also like to point out the below target in the met. The high needs and our economically disadvantaged are in the met category, which means the students who are getting the literacy interventions, it's okay that they're missing the centers in the classroom because the interventions are filling those gaps that they have and helping them be successful when they are packing. So, you know, it is a good news story.
So we need more literacy.
App, app, check, yeah. I deal with the letters. All righty, and here we have our listing overall, all students, there was a decline of 2.1 points, which means an increase in the percentage of students that were chronically absent. Not so for the lowest performing, and for the other subgroups, we see some decline.
Similar, similar to Amy, we also, when we had our open house, I showed these slides to parents and said, please know you will get the letters from me at 5, 10, and 15, and it matters. Please be cognizant, please know the letters are coming. The five doesn't require a meeting with me, but the letter that says 10 will. So.
I give you feedback, I'm going to give you feedback.
Well, I tell them early and often because they still call crying practically on the first letter that they get. So it's, I tell them at kindergarten screening, I'm Debbie Downer, I talk a lot about the district attendance policy at kindergarten screening because we want to build the habits early. And as Tammy mentioned, kindergarten is sometimes the time where parents go, it's okay to take vacations.
I, I had three emails the next day apologizing that they had already booked for, during the school year. So they heard me, but they've already booked. Hopefully moving forward, we can get a better turnout than ever.
Onto the middle school. I'll come back to it. And for all students in literacy, we can see that they met with the target. Our lowest performing, there was a decline of 2.1 points, high needs, economically disadvantaged have improved. Our ELS are, there was no change, and the difference of 0.1 from previous years, students with disabilities compile, proposed 25% of the students at O'Malley, there was a decline of 1.2%. Also a bit of a decline, 0.6, which is basically the same, it's the same score, but they're going to give a designation of decline. Multi-race non-Hispanic Latino exceeded their targets, and of the 659, 557 students fall into the, the white subgroup category, and those 557 met their target in literacy at the middle school. For, in mathematics, we see some declines. If you take a look at the column that says change, we certainly don't want to see negative numbers, but minus 1.0, minus 0.9, to 1.6, 0.1. This one here is an area that, that we, of course, we want to take a look at and see what's going on with the Hispanic Latino population. Turning to science, there's a, there's a bit of a decline with the exception of students with disabilities who didn't meet their target. Interesting. And there was a new science program at the middle school this year. Is there anything that we need to say about?
Second month.
But the intent, of course, is to shore up. In terms of instruction in relation to the assessment.
Consistency among grade levels and aligning to the new standard.
English language growth, we see the range from 39 to 48. All but one is in the normal distribution in the 40s. I haven't had any information on last year. Mathematics, we can see again with one exception, students with disabilities, they are all in what we have formerly referred to as the normal distribution. We have a 49.8 in one of them, a 46.6 for all students combined. Chronic absenteeism, amongst all students, there's a decline, meaning an increase, the change is 1.9%. So the chronic absenteeism is, is, these numbers are, are high. 14.9 for all students in 18, 20.2, 22.1, 25.9. Those are pretty wild numbers for chronic absenteeism. And that's something that, I don't know if you'll speak to it, or able to speak to it a little later on, but that's, those are, those are significant, very significant numbers. This you as well?
Yeah. So we, we did meet our target in ELA. I'm going to speak to my understanding of what's happened in the past at this point. We did start working with BSRI, which is now momentum last year. We're continuing that work this year. The teachers have worked to revise scope and sequences, we're working on that. They're working on including differentiated resources, targeting reading and readiness levels, those kinds of things to help build comprehension and, and really engage kids in the literacy subjects. Math and ELA growth, there was growth across the board, but not meeting the target level. As Rich showed, they're, they're close, but we would like to meet those targets. Middle school is traditionally across the state a place where there is a dip, but we can never be okay with that. We have to, we have to get our performance up on par. So, so there are a lot of things going on. Like I said, you know, we talked about English, the math, math's in its 30th year of a new math curriculum, big ideas. This is the year they're spending their focus, going through, taking a look at where the pacing is working, where it's not, choosing priority standards. We're doing work on that actually tomorrow to set priority standards and, and really analyze the curriculum that they've now got a pretty good understanding of to make sure that they're working toward the direction of spending more time on the, the key concepts and, and less time on the, the concepts and content and skills that are not as high a priority or don't demand as much time. So they'll be doing a little adjustment and tweaking away from, to some extent, what the curriculum recommendations are, the ones that aren't, aren't working. The math teachers spent some time yesterday in their vertical teams, looking at the NCAS scores, the item analysis, and discussing where there were surprises, et cetera. I haven't had time to catch up with them since yesterday yet, but English will be doing the same thing with data teams next week, taking a look again at, you know, which strands of the standards we did well with, which we didn't, where are surprises, taking a look at the curriculum holistically to make sure that we're in alignment with where our performance needs to be given more attention and focus, and then focusing on instructional practices that will help with that. Science, as Greg mentioned, we're, you know, we're just starting, they piloted in a limited manner, the new science curriculum, and the intent with it is for it to fill the gaps. We've got some wonderful things going on in science. Kids are, are doing all kinds of physics work with sales and going out with carts and, and experiments, but there are places where the curriculum needs to be filled in to make sure that they're in alignment. So, so that will happen. Progress monitoring and assessments, we, we do a fall, winter, spring progress monitoring in both English and in math. And I think what I'm encouraging people to do is take a look at whether they're getting good information from that, along with how they're working their curriculum, so that they're really thinking about, do they have the information quickly enough to do something about the instruction the next day, the next week, the next unit, as opposed to, you know, only taking a look at it fall, winter, spring, when you've already got a bulk of the year that's, that's gone by and it's hard to target. So, so we are looking at, at those things as well. Part of the math analysis of the priority standards will be then aligning assessments and coordinates so that they can do a finer job tuning into what the kids need on a day-to-day basis. We don't have in place right now any way to pull kids out in a systematic manner to do a really solid RTI intervention. So there's a lot left to the teachers to differentiate, and a lot ends up going to specialized recommendations and things like that. We do have an after-school program that just began, homework club, and then a mandatory extended day for kids whose assessment scores are, are in the failing levels. But we do need to look hard and quickly at how we can shore up some of that work. There was a math intervention class for a few years, and that was a position that was cut less due to budget, much to my dismay, but we're, we're going to have to be creative and take a look at what our needs are if we really want to grow those areas. In terms of attendance, you know, we have a student services team that's, that's really in tune to what kids are struggling for, what reasons. We have a blend of, of vacation and mental health, school avoidance. Like at this point, it's too hard for me to tell, I don't have that experience with it to be able to say definitively how much vacation impact there is versus other things. But I do know that there, there are some kids who are significantly struggling. We're doing home visits, we're partnering with families, we're doing outreach. We began to focus on tardiness because often that will lead to full day school avoidance, and we, we changed up the detention system that wasn't working, and we've begun doing personal contact with kids, phone calls home. And so far, it's early to tell, but the, the guidance staff who's making that contact seems to feel that they're getting positive results and kids are doing better, getting to school on time. So hopefully we can get that trend, keep that trend going. School avoidance, I, you know, in the, in the numbers of conversations I've had so far with kids who aren't coming and I've sat down with, there is certainly an alignment with some of the curriculum. Like, you know, math comes up a lot. As a matter of fact, in three out of three conversations with kids, when I ask the question, you know, what is it about school that's hard for you, what are you struggling with, what, what makes you feel like you don't want to be here? It comes up pretty universally, math is too fast, I don't get it. So again, that, that not having the intervention to do some work with them is, is a help, is , it's difficult in terms of how to respond. But that's, those are the things we're looking at, is trying to make sure that we provide the support and support for those things.
I have a question. First, I just want to start by saying, middle school to me, I always have, I'm in the opinion of middle school is the most difficult, that age group. And that's where the struggles really start, going from the elementary to small classrooms to where everybody's together and they're losing a little bit of their community and going into a bigger school. My question to you is, coming from a district, and thank you for coming, I know it's, you're fairly new here and haven't had a lot of time, but do, when you first came here, do you see, did you instantly see any areas that you would like to see change in? In, in the dynamics of the school and like in professional development? Or I, I'm hearing you say in the, the intervention, you're noticing that fairly quickly that you, you need that. Are there other areas that you have had in the past in all the districts you feel you could bring here that could help?
I think the, the biggest thing that comes across immediately, both from my observations and from meeting with staff and community, is sustainability. So the feeling that there are a lot of loops slash changes, so one thing is tried, but doesn't really get traction before something else is tried. So, so hoping to slow things down a little bit and, and really take our time to take a look at what we're doing and really throwing all the obstacles out there to see what is getting in the way of it being effective. And then try to find a solution for that, as opposed to, okay, it's not working, let's move on to something else. Because we really do need to gain traction with someone else. That and, you know, I think the, the things that the teachers are all focused on, need the dedication and time, which is, you know, building that differentiation, developing curriculum that allows them to bring in, for example, choice in literature that hits readiness levels as opposed to the, you know, one class, one book approach that, that really, you'll lose a lot of kids from the high end and the low end in that situation.
Interesting. Thank you.
Now, we're starting, moving on to the high school, beginning with the ELA achievement. And we see declines across the board, some of them significant when we look for the lowest performing, but we spoke about that earlier, about the composition of the lowest performing students, our students with disabilities. Moving on to the mathematics, and all of this is quite uncharacteristic, quite frankly, for the, for the high school. And I tried to point out before, at the very outset, that this emphasis on the lowest performing groups does place a significant drag on total performance. With that said, all students, there is a dip in mathematics of 9.5, but our lowest performers was minus 20.5 in mathematics, and students with disability was minus 15.9. There are declines in science as well. For all students, it was a minus eight, lowest performing at a minus 11.5, and you can see the others are in the seven point range. The white subgroup population's 157 students, so there was a dip of four points in that area as well. Turning to growth, we have numbers here which Turning to growth, we have numbers here which lie lower than the normal distribution, and that, of course, is a concern that we have to examine very, very closely and see what's going on. 117 of the 117... This doesn't work. Well, I'm gonna leave that alone, but everybody is below target here, and more importantly, it's below that cutoff for that normal distribution. Here we see at least a couple, the all students is a 41.9, and the others are...
The door has to be left open.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You can tell the guy to stop acting anonymous.
Unless it's my own. So mathematics, where, you know, again, the student growth, the arbitrary 50, but the areas that are below the 40 are things that we really need to focus and concentrate on. The four-year cohort, we see across the board that there is improvement in the cohort graduation rates, improvement but below target. The extended engagement, there is a decline in the overall graduation rate, meaning that lower percentages of students who went on to seek to graduate high school in 2017, as a fifth-year student, less percentage of them actually made it through to graduation. The annual dropout rate, we talked about this at the earlier portion of this meeting, we have dedicated a lot of effort into this area, and in some instances, three out of the five areas, we have exceeded the target in lowering our dropout rate. You saw this before, the attaining the English language proficiency, all students met the target. The chronic absenteeism, we have declines, no changes or improve below target at Gloucester High School. But the percentage rates are quite high. Economically disadvantaged is at 41.6, chronic absenteeism, that's quite severe, 38.2, 36, overall students 27.6. So it would appear, based on these numbers, that we have quite a severe chronic absentee issue at Gloucester High School. Advanced coursework, in a number of areas, we have met our targets or improved below target, students with disabilities. We're doing a study on equity and access to our grants coursework. One of the areas that we really need to focus in on are students with disabilities, but it probably also faces some of our biggest challenges, since by definition, a number of students with disabilities have learning disabilities. Nonetheless, there are strategies for working with them and integrating them in courses at all ability group levels. And I will then, for commentary, turn on James.
Sure. So this is a quick graph to take a look at some of the changes in student population that occurred between 2017 and 2018 that you can see in the data. So again, we talked about English language learners, you know, we had two English language learners, two former ELLs represented in last year's data, and now becoming 20 and 25. In 2018, of the lowest-performing students, 43% of the lowest-performing students, and if you remember, that's where a lot of the decline was, in the lowest-performing students. 43% of the lowest-performing students are English language learners, many of whom, when they arrived at Gloucester High School, have very significant disruptions in their education. You know, by the time they get to us, we have 17, 18, 19, 20-year-olds at times, starting at Gloucester High School. But a positive thing, 80% of the English language learners scored a needs improvement or above in ELA. So they, when, if you compare those students to the students the year before, who were not English language learners, right, so only had two of them, yeah, they scored lower, but 80% of the English language learners who took the LA M-CAS are on track to graduate. So to us, that's good information. This next number is something the math teachers were really interested in, this next number. Percent of students taking the grade 10 M-CAS who weren't in our school in grade seven. So these are students who don't have a, the reason we know that number is because they don't have an SGP, they don't have a student growth percentile. It used to be, you know, back in 2015, 8.7% of our students weren't there in seventh grade at O'Malley. And you can see it goes up a little bit. And then last year, 31.7% of our students weren't in our school in seventh grade. They don't have an SGP. They don't have a student growth percentile, so they're not counted there. So that would seem like for the math teachers, this was, they took a digging in to find that number. So that means there's some movement happening, and there's some disruption in their education and so on. High-need students, you can see the growth in high-need students, and then as with all our schools, and you saw a little bit with O'Malley as well, this slight increase in students with disabilities, but remembering that that's about 9% over the state average for students with disabilities. So those are some of what we deal with. And then finally, in the last slide here, that, you know, some of the areas of success and then where we really need to improve. So in English language learner proficiency, we met targets there. How did we do that? We got support from the school committee, adding an FTE, you know, adding a BSL teacher. We have common planning time there. We've been able to expand our course offerings for English language learners, so there's BSL 1, 2, and 3, there's a sequence for them. We have SCI courses in science, in math, and in social studies that we offer them, that's sheltered English immersion, so they're getting language-rich environments in all their courses throughout the day. That seems to have really benefited the students quite a bit, and we've been able to meet our targets. Advanced coursework, you know, again, that was something that really, five or so years ago, we decided we really wanted to open up our AP classes to more students and to challenge more students to take the most challenging courses we offer. We wanted to offer more AP courses, even though we were a slightly somewhat smaller school, up to the trend, so to speak, and say, well, what we can do is, we really want to offer more for the students, and it's worked, we've been able to meet our targets there. And a little later in the year, we'll have the night where I get to talk about the AP scores, and we have the largest number of students that were taking AP tests last year, and we're kind of able to expand there. As we heard before, the graduation and dropout rates increased. Two years ago, we faced real difficulties there, and through school counseling, through our student support team, through the Gloucester Alternative Program, through our anchor program, that's the social-emotional therapeutic school within a school that we have at Gloucester High School, and then through the Bridge Program that helps address chronic absenteeism. We've been able to keep kids in school and get them to graduate on time. Our growth rates, so although our growth rates are hovering at that, you know, that cut, that range, I was talking about that, 40 to 60 range, in ELA, that represents a 5% improvement in SGP from last year to this year. Although the overall score has decreased, right, that's comparing 2017 to 2018, but if you compare the same kids to where they were, right, their growth was better, still at the cusp of that 40%, but there is an increase there. Where we really need to focus is on our lowest-performing students, the special education students. One of the things we've learned, and Greg talked about this a little bit earlier, is where the elementary schools focused their attention, they were able to improve over five years. Where we focused our attention in those upper categories, we've been able to make improvements. So now, you know, our attention is really turning toward, and Lynn mentioned this too, toward intentional differentiated instruction, same thing's happening at O'Malley, you know, the M-CAS item analysis that you heard Lynn and all the elementary principals talk about. And then targeted professional development, for instance, there's this key literacy program that really helps with differentiated instruction in ELA, beyond writing to texts. Lowest performing students, when you do the item analysis, struggle most with reading something and then being able to write about what they've just read. That's the biggest gap we find. So we have some targeted PD coming up this year, already planned. We're doing a lesson study initiative where a group of teachers will be working with a consultant on studying their lessons to make sure they're maximizing their use of time. I hear about that from the elementary teachers an awful lot, at the high school, our times are shorter, 45 minutes a day, but we really have to maximize our use of that time, particularly for our lowest-performing students. And then there's bringing to life the district curriculum accommodation plan, which has a lot of ideas about differentiation. And last year, we had the kickoff initiative to embedding more of that in daily practice, so it's not just a document on the shelf somewhere, but it's something that's living. So those are, that's the how, how are we going to address the problems that came up. Our history shows that when we focus on something, we can make improvements, so we've got a plan to do it here, too.
Thank you. And last is just the accountability, and with the exception of the high school, our schools do not require any outside assistance or interventions. With Gloucester High, they, if you recall, the district and the school accountability commission, DSAC, they will probably send out some representatives. We will be talking from the district improvement plan to the school improvement plan to the growth plan, the newly designed growth plan for the anti-accreditation. The high school just had a visit yesterday and today, or yesterday and today, and two years in order to fulfill those assertions, and we will work with them in many of the areas that James has spoken of, and hopefully treat this year as a bloodbath screen and move on. So that's the story.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you. Good work.
So we will move on to a much more exciting superintendent's report.
Thank you, as always, Mr. Chair. We're listening. Okay, item number one is, I attended the annual business collaborative meeting, that's sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce, it's sort of a kickoff meeting, this was last Friday, and it involves Manchester Essex, Rockport, and Gloucester. One of the things that, they talk about a variety of things, but the big event is they're winding up to prepare for the college, the KGN College and Career Fair, which is anticipated for March 13th or 14th in 2019. They were talking about how do we increase the numbers of participation by students and parents, wouldn't they be better shifting to a Wednesday as opposed to a Thursday, using the decked students in order to create a marketing campaign, we'd publicize the College and Career Fair, and getting more student representatives involved in the planning of the event as well. Some of the other topics were career days within classrooms, the financial literacy program at the high school, which is sponsored by both Bank of Gloucester and Wellspring, and the possibility of internships and summer support as well. One of the items that was discussed, I should make mention, of the Gloucester Biotech Academy, and also its summer program as well, so there was some discussion and definition about that particular program. Item number two, a number of us had an opportunity to participate in the ceremony for domestic violence awareness, which was held at City Hall last Monday at 12:30, a week ago, not Columbus Day, but the week before. There were a number of the social agency groups, Wellspring and HAWK and a host of others that have dedicated their professional lives to minimizing, eliminating domestic violence. By way of some of the efforts going on at Gloucester High School in February, they'll be hosting presentations by Mr. Michael Astley to talk on preventing data violence. This gentleman is a father of a Wayland girl who was killed by her boyfriend as a result of such violence. And another speaker by the name of Ashley Bentikson, who herself has been a survivor of domestic violence as well. So they will be having two larger presentations, and they'll be breaking up the school into groups for further conversation and hopefully sensitizing our students even more to the importance of protecting one another and being respectful.
Will all students be getting that presentation?
I'm pretty sure the answer is yes, I have to confirm that to James, but I think it would be a good idea that we do. Just as a reminder, we continue to have our bi-weekly Department of Public Works facilities meetings, we had our last one on October the 2nd. It has remained a mainstay of our communication with the Department of Public Works. Some of the topics, most recently, there is a rope-climbing unit at Beeman, which is well over 20 years old. You cannot replace the components, the ropes are fraying, it's a safety hazard, that has to go down. They'll remove that unit, they'll mulch the area, and the PTO has been notified, and hopefully their intention is to see what they can raise for funding in order to ultimately replace that particular portion of the ground. The letter to the city council has been completed. We had spoken about this at school committee regarding the flooring for some of our CPT classrooms, in particular, the electrical and the carpentry shop, if I'm not mistaken. We are working, we began that conversation the previous Tuesday with DPW to help them help us in establishing a plan for what needs to be done, and we may wind up getting the house architect involved as well, and once we have a clear sense of how to maximize what the flooring should be like, how things should be moved around, what the cost estimates are, we'll bring that to the attention of BNF and the school committee as well. Item number five, we're in the process of following up on a coordinated program review and update on the civil rights. First, we are going to be preparing our staff to review curriculum materials. Obviously, it all won't be done in one year, but rather, we will establish the process. This year, we'll provide the training, and we will begin, hopefully this spring, in some of the actual review of our curriculum to ensure that it is devoid of bias and stereotyping. Second, part of our self-evaluation has to do with equity in courses, classrooms, discipline, and athletics. We have gathered a host of data on these particular issues, we're sifting through it at this particular point in time, and we want to see, as the M-CAS sort of suggested as well, the results, what subgroups are represented in all of our courses, and is there equity meaning equal opportunity for all? We'll also be sending out some surveys to parents, to students, we'll ask them to do an online survey in school after some preparation, and we'll ask our teachers and coaches as well to see if they have observed, seen, noticed that there may be a bias in any of those particular areas. So that is in process. Item number six, I need to contact, could you contact me and tell them to come?
To come over now?
Yeah. The GHS Roof Building Committee is going to have its closeout meeting on Friday at 11:30. Punch list items have all been addressed, particularly the coating on the new rooftop units for the ventilation for the HVAC. Once delivered and put into position, they were starting to flake. Once delivered and put into position, they were starting to flake. There were problems already. That issue, we're being assured, has been addressed, as well as all of the other items that need to be done. So we'll be looking at final budget expenditures review, approval of final payments, and all the closeout forms that are necessary to make it official in the eyes of the MSBA. Last, I had mentioned this earlier, but the Board of Education is going to be meeting tomorrow to discuss the 2018 assessment and accountability system. And to repeat, the new commissioner has gone on record as saying that the new accountability session does require some scrutiny, close scrutiny. So we'll be keeping our eyes peeled to see what changes or not take place going forward.
Any questions of the superintendent? Do we have a motion to accept the superintendent's report?
Simmons?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, unanimous. And we'll move on to the Word of Subcommittee reports. We will move on to our action items, and there's just one. And we have a $30,000 grant from the GDF, although it's directly from John and Molly Burns, and it is to support the transportation for the GHS construction craft labor program.
I move that we accept the grant as just described.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Other than I think we perhaps should send a letter of thanks to the Berns, might be appropriate. Joel?
This covers one year.
It covers one year, yes. It's basically for the transportation, move the kids from the high school to, to, yeah, that's what it's called, right?
Sounds like a test.
Well, it's, yeah, it's, but it is a pilot program. It's not necessarily any, you know, may not exist next year, or it, or funding for it may be provided if it does, so it's not committed to keep. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, unanimous. We'll move on to Massachusetts School Building Authority. As the superintendent stated, the, there's a closeout meeting this week for the roof project. The East Gloucester Vets Building Committee will meet tomorrow, where we will review the two applications that we have gotten for the designer. And in part, our committee's, I'm not supposed to take a vote on it or rank them, but we are supposed to have a discussion about it to the members that will be going next Tuesday to Boston, where the designers will be interviewed and with the MSBA Design Review Committee, and at which point, I believe, one will be selected from the two, hopefully. I think that's how the process goes. I think it all happens that day. Right next to you. Any questions on MSBA? As I mentioned at our last meeting, there's going to be a joint city council school committee meeting on the 30th Tuesday of October. It will be at the O'Malley Middle School Library, Innovation Middle School Library. And I had asked if anybody had any items which they would like to put on the agenda. As it stands now, we'll be talking about facilities, and we'll be talking about the health and safety around the implementation of the marijuana legalization and the opening of perhaps outlets in the community and what we are doing and what the city is doing for education and an update on that situation.
Do they have Karen Carroll here?
I believe they will.
Karen Carroll?
Will be here. I should have contacted her. And I would suggest that we put an item on the agenda where we ask the city council to talk about what they're doing to proactively increase revenues for the city.
I agree.
Not because budget time will be upon us before we don't, and they'll be saying, we've got no money.
And I just heard many reasons why we need more of them last year.
Yes. Anything else?
Yeah, maybe we want to ask them what their interpretation of the purpose of the code ordinance is, Chapter 18, Section 1824 is.
That might be.
I think we should ask them what they think this is about. They created it.
Yeah.
What is, what is it?
That's where we have to ask them for.
Yeah, I think we should do that.
Because we're sending them this stuff, and I don't, I haven't seen it as an action or even.
It's an ancient, it's an ancient ordinance. It's not ancient, but it's forty, fifty years old.
We did get hit over the head with it.
Right. So why, what is this about? What purpose does this serve?
Or what might be a better approach to it?
And if it is just that they want to be informed that we have the needs and that they need to understand that when they're looking at capital, then that's, that's a fine answer. Just are they even aware of this?
Okay. Anything else? Talking about the agenda for the joint school committee, do we feel on it?
So I apologize for my somewhat tony's effort. Did I hear a little bit about what the plan is for our letters that we sent to them?
Well, it's how, what they do with them.
What they do with them.
What do they, what do they think?
And what reaction will they?
No, what do they think? The ordinance?
What's the point?
What's the?
Oh, the ordinance itself.
What's the point of the ordinance itself? It's a city council legislative act. And maybe now make them aware that it exists. And what exists, what it means. They can have a discussion of what that means.
I mean.
What does this mean?
I look at these meetings as a way of them checking up on us, and it just seems like we don't get the back and forth for.
Well, I suggested that we ask them what the city council is doing to proactively increase revenues for the city. I don't know who would put out on that. They do have BNF.
No, I thought about this, but I can't really come up with anything that I know would be a conversation that they'd react to.
Well, if you think of anything, I'm going to submit that to the council president soon, probably by Friday. So if you think of anything else, let me know. Is there anything else in the business, our old business that?
Joel? I'm not sure if I missed it. Has the, a couple of meetings ago, I asked about looking into these enrollment figures and whether or not there was any budgetary savings to be made by reducing class, class number, class count at Beeman to bring it down or to see it closing. And just based on what we have in our packet today, you know, just throwing it out there, rough members, Plum Cove costs $1.4 million a year on the latest budget. You could close that school, you'd have not one single class, any grade with more than 23 kids per student, you have a district down to 21.9 kids per class. I was wondering, has that been looked at yet and reported out?
We're going to receive a report at BNF.
From program. Program's supposed to do this first.
That was the recommendation, that program look at it programmatically before budget.
What I was, the impression, and correct me, is that we were to look at the modular issue at Beeman, and we've been doing some work on that, and I know that Mr. Gross had asked for educational implications with respect to that. Am I hearing that there's a second review that should be taking place with respect to the closing of Plum Cove?
That was, that was mentioned in the same conversation.
We were just talking about the need for additional revenue. Even if you, I know it's not dollar-for-dollar savings, but if you saved a million dollars by closing a school, that would go a long way this year in the budget. And if not, I guess I would ask the committee to certainly look into that in the immediate term, but also to think about if and when we're able to construct another elementary school, if during the necessary redistricting that will come from the part of combining the East Gloucester and Vets, you could at that time shuffle the K-5 population and close Plum Cove as you close East Gloucester and Vets and move into the new facility without it being any bigger than it's planned for right now. Just another thing to think about.
Are you saying put three schools into it?
No, what I'm saying is, right now, we have the capacity, right now, we have 72 classes across the district, and if we went down to 60 classes across the district, nothing would be more than 23 students per class. So I understand one of the hesitations to something like closing a school is that requires a tremendous amount of redistricting of students, which can be disruptive to families, communities, et cetera. We have inherently a redistricting of sorts if we are in fact closing two schools and moving them into one. And so if at that time, we just did a redistricting of K through, of K through five, you wouldn't, you'd be able to use Beeman with modulators being replaced unfortunately, new East Gloucester Vets and West Parish would hold every K through six student without exceeding, like I said, 23 kids per class. And so that was a little more palatable. Again, it makes us, it doesn't help us budgetary for the next few years as we continue to keep all of these schools open. You know, you look at some of these, like Plum Cove, they're averaging, they don't have a single grade level where there's more than 18 kids per class, somewhere at 16 kids per class. I mean, that's awesome, but whenever a financial position seems to have that luxury.
We're not going to go into discussion of this issue right now. Okay? The question is whether it's being referred, and the administration has been working on this to do a presentation to the subcommittee. I have some points.
So I don't want to debate the topic, but I just want to be clear on process here.
This is, this is not.
Wait, wait, I want to say what I want to say.
This is not a agenda.
No, I want to say what I want to say.
Talk about closing a school.
If we're talking about referring something right now, I want to say this. I want to say this. So we have one school member, school committee member, maybe more here at table, I don't know, and that's a discussion for another time, that's sitting here talking about closing a school and referring it to the superintendent to report back to us.
That happens.
If there's two things in this community that's going to create an outreach and an uproar is talking about distribute, what's the?
Redistricting.
Redistricting and closing a school. We just heard a great MCAS presentation of our elementary schools and how good they're doing. I feel at this point, we don't need the superintendent wasting time on that topic when we should be talking about what's going on down at the high school. I don't need to hear if closing a school meets the bottom line financially somewhere. That is not even on my radar. I want to fix what we have. I don't want to talk about closing a school. I don't want my superintendent wasting time presenting that to a committee when we don't even know if the rest of us are agreeing that. To me, it's a waste of time. We have a plan, we're trying to build a new school, we'll deal with Plum Cove when we get to Plum Cove. I have no desire to shut down the school right now. I want to fix the high school. I don't want anyone wasting time coming back to us with reports to go through two subcommittees to save money so that you can make the city happy somewhere, because you have an agenda running.
I can, that's, that's.
Not going there.
Okay.
It's not always about money. We're here for education.
All right. We're not here to debate that issue.
If we're making a referral to the superintendent to come back with a report.
The referral was made already.
But not anything more than what we discussed with the modulators.
The referral was made about the modulators, and they're, they're doing work on that. And if you want to make a referral about closing, going from a 12-class district to a 10-class district.
I want to vote on that if that's going to be the referral.
Needs to be on the agenda before you just refer.
Well, we can, you know, if that's a referral, we can bring that up to the next meeting. But work is being done on the 12 till 11. That's, and it'll be reported out. It's not a high priority, but that being said, you know, it's, it should be looked at. You know, we're going to be up against a very tough budget this year.
And our class sizes are growing, not getting smaller.
Not growing, we've got less kids.
Excuse me, the preliminary report on the modulators, will be reporting to which subcommittee? Which subcommittee?
I would, oh.
This is not on the agenda. How are we having on this discussion?
Well, he's asked him where to do his work today.
We'll, we'll figure it out.
And this is not a new, any continuing business.
We'll figure that out with the committee chair, the subcommittee chair. All right. If there's anything else. We're going to go into executive session for the purposes of discussing agreements by GATE, I believe, by.
Not to return to.
We will, we will be coming back into session only to adjourn. We will take a five-minute recess so that GATN TV can pack up their stuff and go home and see the family.
Okay. Thank you. You need a motion?
We need a motion to go into executive session.
For the purposes of discussion of GATE agreements.
All right. Okay, roll call.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
Kathy Clancy?
Yes.
You were?
Yes.
Mr. Faboso?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Chairman Poe?
Yes, okay. Five-minute recess.